I'd like to invite everyone to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
And two, a workable wish again. One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could you roll call?
Ken Collier.
Here.
Craig Prochel.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Polinkan.
Here.
Wiley.
Here.
You roll email the copy of the minutes from our January 5th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Side it. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. Motion carried. First thing on our agenda tonight is a presentation by Adams County Clerk, Mr. Jim Vogoweed, in reference to the possible use of voting centers in upcoming elections. Jim, if you'd take it away.
All right.
That mic should be on, so you should be, we record our meetings.
Okay, very good. All right, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I have Mr. Ed Dyer with me. He's the county council. He's a member of the Vote Center Committee. And Mr. Ken, you are?
Right.
One of our members. We have 20 members on our committee, and we've met several times. The handout that I gave you, it's got several pages to it. The first page is from the Indiana Election Division about the steps that you go through if you want to become a Vote Center County. Now, right now, we are a precinct-based county. And like for this upcoming election, we have 25 precincts, 15 voting locations. And on election day, a voter can only vote at one place. You have to vote at, you know, whatever precinct that you live in. That's where you have to go to. And for every election, we always have people going to the wrong place. You know, just this past election out at the Bridge, they had about 25 people show up at the wrong place. And so they have to call the courthouse, you know, where do I go vote at? And so we always have issues, people don't know where to vote. And they go to the wrong place, and we gotta, you know, get them in the right direction. But anyway, with the Vote Center concept, is that a voter can vote at any Vote Center on election day. And in order to do that, you have electronic poll books as well. I got a demonstration here. It's an Apple iPad, and it's downloaded with the voter registration for Adams County. And when a voter would come in, usually they have their driver's license is their photo ID, and usually ask their voter identification number. And, you know, you just set it right there, and you hit the scan button. It scans it, and it pulls up their name, their address, precinct, voter ID, and it shows whether or not they have voted yet.
And the signature.
Yeah. And then once you, and then they would just sign this iPad itself. We double-check it with the signature on file that we have. And if everything matches, then we print out a little piece of paper, where they would take it to the judge. The judge sees what precinct to pull up on the machine. You know, a voter goes and votes, and he heads on home, wherever it wants to go to. And so we are, in our Vote Center Committee, are thinking about possibly six locations for the county. And as I said, we currently have 15 locations, so we're thinking about reducing it to six. And on that one page that you have, there's a second page, that is a sample of election calls for having five centers.
Okay.
And, you know, currently using eight to three workers. And if we had five centers, it would go down to 35 poll workers on election day. And so it shows, you know, some of the savings that you would experience, because you have less manpower needed to conduct the election on election day. And I guess, you know, we're still trying to start up. We're gonna have five or six, and, but, you know.
Have you thought what locations those would be?
Yeah, we're thinking about, well, the Bridge Church has already said yes. We contacted the KFC, and haven't got a return. They've been doing it for a long time. But I'd like to reach, you know, a verbal statement from them. And then we have the Monroe Fire Station has agreed. And then in Burn, we have the First Missionary Church has agreed. There's a second church we have approached, and we're still waiting for their response. Swiss Village has also said that they would be a Vote Center if this other church says no. That Swiss Village would also be a Vote Center. And then down in Geneva, there is a church that we approached that are waiting for their board. Well, one of the board members says that they like the idea of helping out. And so we have to wait for them officially to say, or give us permission, you know, to use their fellowship building for a voting location.
But the voting machines, you still use the current voting machines?
Yeah, same. The only thing different is that we would have, instead of paper poll books, we've got these electronic. And it takes about 30 seconds, you know, for our person to come in, put their ID here, look it up, sign it, and then they move on.
So they need internet access?
Yeah. Yeah, there's hotspots is what we use. You know, it's like the size of a cellphone, that you have one at each location.
So that's how they get that?
Yeah. And this would be connected to the court, the central commands would be in the courthouse.
Okay.
And that way, all the electronic poll books communicate with one another. You know, if somebody votes here in Decatur, and they try to vote across town?
It would already be cut off.
Yeah, it communicates, hey, you voted. If they try to go somewhere else, it's gonna say they voted.
Yeah.
So, you know, you can't.
I know in prior elections, prior to you as clerk, like Union Township Hall, for example, had issues. They didn't have internet access, but they didn't have a secure phone line to call in when there was problems.
We had the anticipation of using these hotspots, and it's actually a pretty reliable technology. But then all of the locations that we have also have their own Wi-Fi system, and we would use that as a backup. And honestly, they don't have problems with it, but you could even use.
Your phone is a hotspot.
As a hotspot, I could do that pretty easy. So the technology is there, but with the built-in hotspots that we would get from this vendor, they have not had an issue at all.
Yeah, there's 92 counties, 24 are Vote Center. 30 counties have e-poll books. And this Knowit, the company that we like, that the counties around here have used, they have 21 out of the 30 counties. The Knowit company uses the electronic poll books. They have over 1,000 e-poll books they've used in November, this past election. So they had no issues with any of their electronic poll books, no connectivity issues. And they have a very good reputation. And Ed and myself and a couple other people went to bluff them to meet with their clerk. And I'll be wanting to share the meeting that we had with her.
We had a nice long talk. They ran the Vote Center system in last election, and had very good turnout, good response from everybody. And we talked about all the variables, and how you do this and that, and everything else. The one thing she said when I asked her directly, do you wish you would have done this earlier? And she said, I wish I would have done that eight years earlier. You know, because it really did work out. And it's a, it's a savings of time, it's a savings of, of poll workers, and anybody that is a precinct chairman. It is getting more and more difficult to find poll workers, because it's a long day for not a whole lot of money, to be honest.
Did you ask them how many from their system that they had with, and they went to the Vote Centers, how many Vote Centers they went to compared to how many they had in the old system?
Like how many, how many Vote Centers did Wells County have?
I think they had 15, I guess. And they went down to five.
And they went to five?
And they were comfortable.
And they didn't talk about having long line, that it took a lot longer to get through?
I mean, municipal elections is gonna be smaller than like, you know, the election this year. And they estimate, like, with, with the e-poll book, it could handle 1,200 easy voters a day at one location. I mean, you could get.
Would it just be one?
It'd be two.
There'd be two at each location?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the, the plan for the moment.
Okay.
Please, okay, you could run two through at a time?
And then the actual voting machines are the current ones we already have, and we've been using for many years. We have 75 of those, and the nominee that we've spread over 15 precincts, we would be able to utilize those 75 over the five or six.
So you actually increased the voter machines at each of the locations?
Yes. Because we will have more people at each of the Vote Centers.
Concentrated, I know. That's where I was going with this, if it would become so concentrated, not end up with a long line.
Yeah, this part is fast. And then with the additional voting machines, there's no, there shouldn't be.
So the bottom.
Person works in Burn and lives in Decatur, or vice versa, and go anywhere.
Anybody who votes there brings up the precinct, and it'll probably get better voter turnout?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a perfect example. If you live in Burn and work at ARG, you could vote during your lunch hour. Live in Decatur, work at Red Gold, go down to the Geneva Church and vote, you know, before you go to work. It's a pretty foolproof system with that electronic vote, because you can only vote one place, period.
What are you guys asking us to do tonight?
Well, we're just communicating our possible plans, and to get your input, what you think about the idea.
Do we have any estimated cost of what it would cost the city?
Well, the county would be the one responsible, the county council.
It doesn't cost the city anything.
Step four.
Other than your fee that the county charges for the votes. And there's another issue that I would like to talk to you after we actually finish this. Just take one minute.
Will that be go down with this, or is this still gonna be?
Well, there'd be less, there'd be less workers on election day, you know, that expense there. You know, like for the, the maintenance expense, you know, if we had 12 of these, I think the maintenance expense is $1,000 per election. So you divide that among 12 machines, it's, you know, less $100 a machine, as far as, you know, the initial expense of buying the stuff. You know, buying this and buying the central command station that goes to the clerk's office. And then the maintenance is only $2,000 a year, you know, for 12 machines, which is what that quote was for.
We don't anticipate any really money savings the first couple of years until we get all this paid for, the infrastructure. Once it's paid, then there'll be considerable savings, not only in money, but immediately there'll be the savings in personnel needed for election day, which is becoming bigger and bigger. We also rent 15 different precincts every election day. Now we're gonna go down to six if we do that.
And another benefit of this here, you know, currently, when it comes to early voting on machines, you have to come to the courthouse. That's the only, that's the only place that you could do that. With this setup, we can have early voting away from the courthouse. I mean, take our machines to Burn, Monroe, Geneva.
And they talked about it at our last meeting, they talked about putting one at Swiss Village and one at Woodcrest, allowing those residents who may not be able to drive to go to the courthouse, or get transportation that can do it right there.
Yeah, you could just take an e-poll book and two machines. And Woodcrest already gave us permission, I spoke with them. They would like for us to do that, at least come out one day, you know, early voting. And of course, Swiss Village, they really want that down there, for sure. And so we can take early voting away from the courthouse. I mean, we still, we still have to do the courthouse, that's by law, but now we can go to other places away from the courthouse for early voting with the machines.
The temporary site, I think you called it, or whatever.
Yeah, satellite office.
Satellite office.
Can we envision doing maybe four hours here, four hours there in a given day, and then the next week, maybe flip-flopping, day and night? It doesn't have to be during business hours. We could do an evening voting session somewhere if the need be. And it's very flexible, we can change that. If something's happening at ARG, and they're gonna have a whole bunch of people out there, we could take one out there and do it.
I think part of the reason that Jim's here tonight is just the steps that we have to go through to get this approved. Step number four is seek public comment, and he's here tonight just basically to show it, get a little media coverage, and go from there. Will you be having any, like, town hall meetings with these?
We're trying to have our first one next Thursday. Because next Wednesday, for our Vote Center Committee, we wanna complete some of these decisions. And then we would start that 30-day thing on Thursday. And then after the 30 days, you know, if you get some changes that, you know, the community would like to make, the county election board can add amendments to it. And then we can send it to Indy.
Who's, who is responsible to give final approval?
This county election board is step five on your piece of paper there. And it has to be a unanimous vote, and we do have that with the county election board. We have three people, and all three liked the idea.
And, and then the county board, election board is the one that gives final approval, though?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to have a consensus from the county commissioners and the county council. Both of those boards have given consensus to move through this phase until we see how everybody likes it, the city leaders throughout the county, and see if everybody's kind of on board to move forward at this point. But we can make this happen this year, this election.
It's May.
May primary.
Yes, in the May primary. It's gonna be a big one, we know, you know. That's one of the things that I want to ask you folks, just to discuss a bit. There's a big talk when Jim's bill went out to the city of Decatur and the city of Burn specifically, for the election costs of the previous elections. And Phyllis and I worked together on getting some numbers, thank you, Phyllis. And we're trying to do the best we can to keep those costs in line. There are fixed costs, and Jim diagrammed them all out. There's one thing that we can do, actually you guys can do, on the staggering of the elections. Right now, we have a big election, and we have the county election, and then the following year, we have a city election, then we have another big election, and then there's one year with no election. If we could get that city election to coincide with the big election, or the county election, you know, every other year, that would save some costs. And that's, I know I'm throwing this on you, but that is something that we are talking about with the county council here just a little bit, taking a look at it. And you say, well, why don't you move the county elections? The main reason the county elections, they're term limited, where the city elections are annual. And, and it would be a thing where you would do one term of three years rather than four, or five years rather than four, you know, to make it work out. But that is something that we don't need to do, don't even need to discuss tonight, but something to think about, and I think there would be some considerable savings.
Now, I had, I guess myself, I had just assumed that across the state of Indiana, all 92 counties, the municipal elections were the same setup?
Well, like, this year, Geneva did not have any elections. All their elections are like this year and two years from now.
So they're not, well, while most of them were, the municipals?
Yeah.
Were this year, that's not?
For some reason, Geneva's not on that side.
Nor do we have to.
It is not a state statute that it has to go that way. You can set your own terms and the own voting.
Well, I think for, for the sake of election turnout, if one, the municipal election is all by itself, and there's nothing else, you know, I think it.
It's a pretty poor turnout.
Yeah, it's a hindrance to the turnout. And if we could match it up with, whether it's a national or a.
The overall thing we want to do is to get more people easy access to vote. And if we think if we make it as easy as possible, more people will vote. And I think it just depends on.
I agree.
Some of that might be true. That's a separate issue from this.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
So what are you talking to me, think it's a good idea?
Well, obviously, I think it's a good idea, yeah. I'm part of the committee, and I think that it's a positive thing. I think it's the way to go in the future, so.
I think, I can see how that does simplify it, because I have worked the polls, and I know what you're talking about, Ed, and trying to come through those books, and then, no, you don't vote here, scrambling to phone, to call to find out where you vote.
And you were the inspector in my precinct, and I thank you very much for it. You kind of eliminated yourself from being able to do that. Too much of the pressure. I've never been able to do it, because I've either been on the ballot, or my son's been on the ballot, one or the other. And so I was already eliminated, so counted on other people to do that.
So I like that.
It's tough to get people, it's tough to get people.
Long day for many.
Just looking at the steps that you've outlined here, Jim, it appears the council and commissioners and the election board itself are the ones that ultimately make this decision, that there really isn't any procedural things that the city must do. So, other than weigh in on whether the city is supportive of what you're, what you're proposing.
The last thing we wanted to do was make a decision and ram it down the city of Decatur's throat. That would be wrong, and we would not do that. And that's why Jim has set up this committee, where we've been going around different places, and just sharing what we're thinking.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeremy. Each year, Jeremy has to do a review on the American Disabilities Act Compatency. And tonight is the lucky night to review that.
Every year, they have to do a review of the, of the, um, good ramp ADA Compatency projects and such that you do.
Thank you.
We just have to have a public review. Okay, anyhow, as you can see on this review, I'm just gonna highlight a few things. Biggest thing is, with Sidewalk Project Program, Monroe Street Project, we were able to add in or approve, improve 4,675 of those sidewalks in 2015. That has been a huge improvement over the past. Normally, we run 12, 1,300 is about all that we do. According to our ADA Transition Plan, we were set at a minimum of 16 curb ramps. This year, with everything we're raising, we need 20 of those ramps. So if you look to page two, you can see the balance. This will be the fifth consecutive year that we've been doing this. Red, obviously, is the ones that do not comply at all. Yellow needs some improvements, and the greens are good to go, they are compliant. As we add ramps, that currently, there was no ramps, it's automatically going to green. So if you kind of question some of the inconsistencies of the numbers, that's what, that's what that reflection is. We encourage the public, they have any complaints, request, if they're having trouble getting around in a wheelchair, you know, so on and so forth, to contact us. We do have a procedure that we go through for requests for what we, what we call is a barrier, remember? We did have one complaint this year, one request from 833 Dirk Street individual that's blind. He's going through a lot of rehab. There was a city tree that caused some considerable damage, there was no handicap ramp. He's going through the rehab, by now, he should have a, a dog. This was back in November when we were working with him. So those are kind of the things that we look to help correct, to make sure that a person is getting to where they're, where they're intended to go, where there's no discrimination, where we're not discriminating, and get somebody from going to a neighbor's house, going for walks, so on and so forth. So we're headed the right direction, but obviously, it's gonna take several years to get all those to green. So, any questions?
Ian Roger's not here, but you kind of, along with this, the sidewalk program, we have, you know, a couple new councilmen here. We have a 50-50 fund for sidewalk replacement for homeowners, and each year, we put how much money into that?
Phyllis, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's 50, 50,000 per year in there now.
In the 50-50?
We just redid the seat-up plan, and I'm pretty sure you set aside 50 for this year, 50 for next year. That went up, it was 45 the previous two years.
And then?
So you increased it from 90 to 100.
So that's something if a homeowner wants to repair their dilapidated sidewalks, they need to contact Roger, make sure that there's money still available. If there is, then they get two estimates, well, Roger will give them the particulars, but you get a couple of estimates, turn them into Roger. As long as the way they plan to do it is acceptable, then the city will pay 50% of their new sidewalk. So, and that's up to $50,000 that the city will put up per year. Now, in addition to that, didn't we also just replace some sidewalks at the kind of wish of the council, or was that?
Yeah, several years ago, if you guys remember, it's probably been almost three, maybe four years since now, probably three years ago. Each council member from their district had an opportunity to basically give us a list of areas they felt was important, four areas that, you know, really kind of bothered them. And then we just kind of went down through the list. Once we were not contacted so much by the homeowners anymore, and even during that era, that we would visit those areas and see if we can, you know, write 24 to pay for those, so on and so forth. A lot of those were 100% city-paid.
And these are, basically, you're talking about homes of, and areas where the people wouldn't even be able to afford the 50%. And the sidewalks are dilapidated, they're hazard, they're dangerous. We might make a suggestion, and those would be looked at, so.
Like last year, we did the Seventh Street Project, that was all, all brand new. The Winchester rehab, that, that first stretch, that was also served as a trail extension, greatly improved walkability from the trail all the way through to where it comes out, and then comes back around, and then also bring it to five foot center here.
Do you have a deadline on application for people to do?
It's just when the money is gone, it's gone.
Okay.
All the money you used last year, or?
Yes.
You put it towards the Seventh Street sidewalk?
We put it towards Seventh Street. Winchester, we did do some homes. There was probably a handful of them, but the majority of ones, those two did those.
Big projects, last year with that money?
But there was several that approached us after a lot of that was completed. They were seeing activity, they were seeing Seventh Street. Winchester and Rose, all would have made a difference.
Is that the top of the list this time?
Yeah, yeah. We do have running list, and I can't remember, there's probably eight or nine of them there already that want to be contacted.
It's a good program.
It's really, it's real reasonable for the homeowner. On an average, it would cost a homeowner, depending on the block size, $1,800 would be their half. But it does vary on the block size.
Right.
Was the sidewalk program established, how long ago was it done? It has been a long time, hasn't it?
Had it ever since I've been on the council?
I remember ever since I was a little kid, because my mom and dad got in on it years ago. So it's been a long time.
I believe it went all the way back to the Harold Miller, around the station.
Because I know whenever we lived at home, Jack Gafford would wrap his side of us, and there was like three of us that did it all to say, no, it was just all one connection.
Would that, would that have been done by a resolution or an ordinance that established the program, do you know?
I think it's always been the seat-up plan.
It's just been a part of.
The seat-up plan.
But the seat-up wouldn't have come in that far back, so was that?
I don't know.
Roger?
No. No, even I believe, I guess. Interesting, no.
It's a very big program, you know, people that are in. It really makes a big difference if you get a couple neighbors to, you know, go together.
Yep. Usually, if one person's gonna do it, a couple other neighbors kind of jump in, do it together.
Something that's just grandfather.
All I need you to do is just make this a matter of record.
Motion to make that a matter of record? So moved. Second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose the same? Thank you, Jeremy. February 4th is the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner Meeting, the KFC, where they recognize large and small business award recipients, as well as a Stephen Decatur Award winner. Last year, the city of Decatur was a sponsor to the tune of $350 for that event. And we got a letter from the chamber asking us if we would like to continue with our support. And that's up for discussion or approval?
I make a motion, clear?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose the same? Carrie, Phyllis, there you go. And then also, we will, we are all invited to attend that. I'll need to know from each of you if you can make it with your spouse.
Tim included?
You can let me know later, after the meeting. Next, I have an update on the First Street Sewer Project and the easement agreements and property purchases. We're coming right along with, with all the purchases and easements. I mean, nothing has, we've not closed on anything, but we're progressing with each of the agreements for the easements. I mean, I think everything's kind of in place, it's just a matter of getting the signatures on the, on the paperwork. Tim?
Yeah, I, I would say that probably at the next meeting, we'll probably have a bunch of documents to present for making it a matter of record and getting approval, funding, and moving forward with closing. We'll start some of the closings here towards the end of the month, on some of the projects that have already been approved. But things are falling into place, so I anticipate that we'll have things pretty well under, under contract. we'll have things pretty well under, under contract by our next meeting. So that's good news.
Yep. That's all on the agenda on the mayor's report. I want to make a matter of record that I was notified by the North Adams School Board that Tim Ellerding will be representing a North Adams Community Schools as a non-voting member of the Redevelopment Commission. Ben Froh held that position, resigned it here at the end of last year. So the school board has nominated Tim and he's anxious to participate. And so we just need to make that a matter of record.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. And then lastly, only thing I want to mention, then we'll go right from this into the department heads and all that, kind of maybe Melissa will take it from here after I make my brief comment. The Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership is holding a kickoff celebration to recognize our 11 county region as one of the designated areas for the $42 million grant recipients. There's 11 counties, obviously Fort Wayne is the big player in this and, but they're not gonna get it all. And at this kickoff, Thursday night up at the Grand Wayne Center, it's open to the public and you go in line and register if you plan on attending. We need as many people as we can to attend that. They're gonna take attendance, they're gonna see where those attending are from and what kind of support the communities are putting forth. I talked to Doug Baumman this morning down in Burn, they've been recruiting people, they got, they're, they're meeting at, I think Hobby or Furniture and they're all gonna carpool up there tomorrow. They're taking multiple cars, so I encourage everyone, Bob, if you can get it in the paper to, the more people that we can get. It's Thursday evening, it starts at 6 o'clock at the Grand Wayne Center and then at 7 o'clock they're having like an official celebration toast. And that's all I'll say on that, but Melissa, if you'd like to chime in on that or Cam, I know you're involved with it too, so. Champagne toast? There you go.
Well, you better give them, you got the email address to the, to get tickets, because they want you to get tickets prior to that.
Yeah.
We oughta get that in the newspaper.
I can get that for you, Bob. Okay, department heads, let's start with Melissa here.
We've had two informational meetings for the downtown facade program. We've had interest from 17 different downtown building owners.
That's great.
And in order to receive an application, we require you to come to this meeting so we can meet you and see you and talk to you about what your ideas for your projects are. We've had a lot of questions, but this being a first year program, we weren't anticipating. So we have the design committee from Main Street meeting tomorrow to kind of put together that frequently asked questions with and get back with the building owners on some answers to these questions. So things are moving along, the application will be due February 29th and the story and then we'll take it from there. We've had good interest so far. The other thing I have to report is last October, we applied for a grant to NDOT, to their rail grade cropping fund. They allocated money for pavement markings, the white stop bar and as well as the RRX that's on the pavement. We received a grant in the amount of $13,850 to do pavement markings at 13 crop, no, at 11 cropping indicators and that includes some of the crossings at Bungee as well.
Good job.
So we are in this process of filling out, completing the grant agreement, back and forth signatures with the statement, and as soon as we have that completed paperwork back, we can work with Jeremy to get a crew to time the weather and start that, that project.
What was the dollar amount?
$13,850. This is a reimbursement program, so we pay upfront and then submit all the receipt and paperwork and then where the city is reimbursed.
Good job, thank you.
So, thank you.
Ann? Jim, you're here for the fire department? Mr. Carbo? Jeremy?
This Thursday, out on Patterson Street, this west of 13th, ATD is working on, working actually with Fleetwood on their expansion, their remodel project, running power up to the building, underground power. They tried to bore under the road a few times with a little block at all. So on Thursday, they're gonna have to open and cut Patterson Street, they'll start around 8 a.m. and should be completed by around winter, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon. Be a little bit of that, it can be next for one day. They tried everything, they tried to go under the, they can see the towers, there's just way too much to deal with.
Does that shut off other industries in there?
Yeah, it will shut off the one entrance or temporarily, temporarily kind of restrict that, that drive through there as they go across.
But they'll still have power, like Dalco?
Yeah, they're just running underground to the building. They, I will give them credit, they tried everything that they can, they can do, no one they, they get up our street, but that's what's gonna happen.
Are they gonna have to reroute truck traffic on that, Jeremy? You've already got that worked out.
They're working, they're working on that, a couple of property over there. Obviously, they're gonna get a truck that's down in there and ask them where to go. They're talking about where they're trying to let them, how they, they're buying, get around. The good thing about it is if you lost them one day, it's a bad thing that they come and sell. Oh boy. If you were up late at a time, you know.
Okay, I had enough, he's gonna reroute it down to 24 and then up past Underburne Bank.
It will be signed, but like I said.
Dan? Great. Nate? We did make a minute. Okay, good, thanks department heads. How about a couple of comments from Tim?
Well, one thing I will ask for is council approval of funding for the completion of the purchase of Corey Affolder. It occurred to me that previously we approved the funding for the Ortiz transaction and the Rice transaction, but as I recall, we had not yet signed the agreement with Corey Affolder on his property. So I would ask that council authorize approval of funding for that because we actually closed that transaction a week from Friday.
So moved.
A second.
Got a motion to approve in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Kerry, Tim, anything else?
No.
Phyllis?
I just need to make a conflict of interest form a matter of record. It's for Tim Baumman who does upholstery work for the city occasionally. I just need to make that a matter of record.
So moved. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Matter of record, okay. Phyllis, anything else? Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Question for Jeremy. The stop sign, the new stop sign at the corner of Monroe and Pickla, it's been hit twice and I commend you for how quickly. I mean, it was like overnight, it was back up, but I don't, I mean, is there anything that from the design aspect that could stop it from happening again?
We're, we're looking at some options.
Concrete tore around.
About every time you have stairs, people are either turning and turning too wide and hitting it, or they're actually up to center, traveling up to the center line and running into it, going to the south. I don't know why.
Coming from the, wow.
Yeah, the one, the one time they went to the south. All over going that way. This was the late, what extent, they actually come up and turn real wide and ran right into it.
That's surprising.
So we, we, we got to get some better pavement markings, obviously it's too cold in the way. But I have a whole list of little stuff that was all of Melissa's rare root marks and stuff that, once we get a contractor in to do that, we're, we're gonna address some other little things.
Yeah, I hate to see...
Phil and I have picked up a lot that started right, right, and then that intersection also. I don't, I don't understand it, you know, the, the other option was put concrete island in there and it wasn't real favorable because of the kind of tight area and so.
Yeah.
That were protected.
Not necessarily.
That were just a trash.
I think people would still drive over the curve.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, obviously you've replaced it several times and...
It's been a rare number of times now, but it's only been once.
But they replaced it quickly. You were commanded on it.
They fixed, pulled out, pulled the post out, but I really was surprised that it hadn't been taken down during the snow. We've had some ice days, we've had some snow days, some ice patches where you can tell people are sliding a little bit when they look there, they're not taking it down during the snow times.
That's when I would expect it to happen.
Yeah, you would think that that's when it happened, but it's not.
Not coming from the south.
That was... Any other council comments?
I do have a couple, just recognizing our Parks Department and the lighting and signage that's gone up on the trailways, the entrance to those, that's really looking nice and want to commend those responsible for that.
The park board, right Jeremy?
Yes, and actually they, we set the last two last Friday, they're, they're still not left. We're waiting on a park for one and then waiting on AP for the last one, we're out there to get power up to us.
But it looks nice.
Tomorrow when it warms up a little bit, we'll get the signs dropped in and we have the signs and everything.
They do look, look nice.
And in the spring, we will landscape around.
Good.
And all the park signs also look good.
Also recognizing Back Forty, Yahoo Travel has named Back Forty as number one buffet in Indiana. I noticed in Illinois, it was a place in Chicago, so recognition for Decatur and Back Forty.
There are some good buffets in Indiana, I know.
It's my favorite type of food.
So yeah, that's a good compliment, the Back Forty. Anything else anyone has? If not, look for approval of the claims.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry, Ann?
Motion, Jerry?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.